I would like to call to order the April 8th, 2021 Agenda Session, and welcome everyone. Commissioner Stewart has attended remotely and asked her to confirm her attendance. Please, Commissioner Stewart, how you doing? Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Is me okay?
Excuse me? She said can hear okay.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you.
You were.
This, um, this meeting is remote. It's a remote meeting, and we need to identify ourselves whenever we're speaking. The invocation will be led by Commissioner Jeanette Council. Dr. Council, would you be a certification please, Father Pledge, please?
May I stand, please? And we gather today to conduct the normal business of our, uh, our body. We ask that you lead us, guide us, and in many cases, help us come up with common sense solutions to the problems that face all of our citizens. Thank you for all that you do, and thank us for, thank you for providing us with you and your service. Amen.
Thank you.
I'm fine. I mean.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no beginning, just as for all.
For the record, I have not had any drinks.
Thank you, Dr. Council. Madam President.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Under item number one, as you may recall, at Monday, the April 5th meeting, the Board moved an item to the Agenda Session. That item is consideration of professional services agreement with Excel Contracting to administer the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and we're going to add that as item
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item 4K?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Yes.
Mr. Council.
Yes.
Mr. Keith?
Yes.
Chairman Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number two is approval of the amendments from the March 11th, 2021 Agenda Session Regular Meeting.
Is there a motion? Thank you, Commissioner Council.
Yes. As submitted.
Is there a second? Second? All in favor?
Your vote, Mr. Council?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. Council? Chairman Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number three, we have a presentation. This is an update from the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Committee. As you know, this was an initiative that the Board put in place beginning last June. We had developed a committee, and we thought it would be appropriate for the co-conveners, as Brenda Jackson and speaking Evans, to update the Board on the activities of the committee. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
As Amy said, I'm Brenda Jackson, Director of Social Services and one of the general managers, and my partner here in crime is Vicky Evans, Finance Director and also General Manager. It gives us great pleasure to come before you and give you an update on DEI Advisory Committee. As you know, you adopted a resolution against racial injustice, and part of that resolution included creating a DEI Advisory Committee. Also in that resolution, you charged the DEI Advisory Committee with creating a DEI Strategic Plan around four focus areas: community outreach, internal operations, training, and recruitment. We're excited that we have the Advisory Committee up and going. It's made up of the Executive Steering Committee. That Steering Committee comprises of the County Management Team, speaking myself as General Managers, as well as a staff support person for public information. We have 22 dedicated and excited county employees across the departments. Those employees make up, racial makeup is based on race, gender, the length of time they've been with the county, the organization, different level, position levels, from everybody from senior level management to middle level management to frontline staff. To just give you an idea of what it looked like, there we are. This is one of our most recent virtual meetings. Again, these are dedicated staff. They do this work along with their day-to-day job responsibilities. You may recognize some of those faces. So, two of our accomplishments, and I think Deputy County Manager Dwayne Holder shared with you a few months ago during the DEI Presentation and Charter. We're excited to have a charter established. We have meetings structured in terms of when we meet, how long we meet, what days we meet. We also have established ground rules, and those ground rules really establish how we do the work. We want to make sure that we do this work, and we work together with respect, that all the members are engaged and involved, that we're able to have honest dialogue, and so we laid out all of those ground rules. We're new at this work, and so we want to make sure that we get training, and so we want to thank County Charter for providing diversity and unconscious lives training, so we all have completed that training. Again, your charge was to us to create a strategic plan around DEI, around those four focus areas. We did a lot of strategic planning research, which was new to us, and so we did a complete overview of what other counties have done around DEI strategic plans. We also looked at counties from other states and their strategic plan. We looked at private industry. We looked at other private organizations like universities, schools, college, anywhere we could find a DEI plan, we wanted to kind of take a look at how they did the work. One of the things that we discovered is that those strategic plans were really based on outcomes, and outcomes, of course, is based on data analysis and quantitative and qualitative data, and wanted to be able to, once we established a strategic plan, where are we at now? Where are we going? And did we get there, and did we achieve it? And so as we looked at that work, it was daunting and overwhelming to pull together that type of comprehensive strategic plan. And so we realized we needed some help. And so we have engaged KL Scott and Associates. They are a DEI consulting firm. They also have experience in DEI training, and they work primarily with governmental entities and governmental agencies. And so they have a strong background in the work that we do. And so we've engaged them to help us with the strategic plan and to conduct training. Phase one of developing our strategic plan is assessing where are we at now? Looking at what are our strengths, weaknesses, threats, and opportunities, our SWOT analysis? Where are the gaps? And then, how do we create a strategic plan in a way that we can monitor and identify what the issues are, and then monitor where we are and how we achieve them? And so we started phase one of the strategic planning process. That involved a CESA piece, and I want to thank you Commissioners for being involved and participating in the survey. It was a small survey, just to kind of kickstart, because this process is really also involved us learning how to do this work. And so it was a small survey, and that involved the other Commissioners, our County Management Team, and members of the DEI Advisory Committee. So it was right around a little less than 50 participants in that first survey. That is recompleted. They've now taken that data and created heat maps. And heat maps are just a real quick way, a colorful way, if you're familiar with weather reports, weather maps, they kind of give you a quick visual of your data. And so we have, I'll show you in a minute a heat map. We're also from that heat map, we're taking that information and that data, and we're starting to do our SWOT analysis, our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats around those four focus areas. Our next step in the process is to expand the survey, because again, that 50 was just kind of a quick hit, a quick snapshot. We want to survey all county employees and include that data into the assessment. With that said, here's an example of the heat map and the SWOT analysis that we're doing. And as you can see, it's color coded. The scoring on this is a range of one to five. If you remember when you completed the survey, it was strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree, neutral, I don't agree or I don't disagree either. And so based on that, what you'll see is in the green, those are the areas where folks agreed or strongly agreed, saying, hey, we're doing well there. The gold was, Trump said they didn't really agree or disagree many things. Not good, but it's not bad either. It's okay. There's probably some room for improvement there. And then the red was those areas where folks disagreed. I will say that in the data, no one strongly disagreed, which means there's room for improvement there. And so that's an example of a heat map. And this particular heat map is policy development. You'll see that we scored a 3.54, which we're doing okay in that area. So what the Steering Committee is doing now, we're taking this heat map, and we're looking at it, looking at what the issues are. Of course, the first place we're going to focus on is in the red areas, and start then opening that into our SWOT analysis, where we're talking about our strengths, what is it that we do well, weaknesses, where we could improve, opportunities, what opportunities are open to us, and then threats, what can harm us, what could be a real area of concern? The Steering Committee is walking up into groups, and you'll see at the bottom, and they're doing this work now. Again, the next step in the process is to survey the entire county, and then, of course, those heat maps and SWOT analysis will be amended. And so we're well into starting the work of creating the strategic plan. At this time, I turn over to Vicky for other accomplishments.
Are there any questions for, any questions at this point? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Brenda, and good afternoon, Chairman Evans and Commissioners.
How you doing, Mrs. Evans?
Well, good, thank you. To highlight our further accomplishments, I'm not sure if you realize, but we, the DEIAC, received its first task, assigned from the Board of Commissioners before we ever even met for the very first time. And so that, that assignment was to look at the county's holiday schedule and consider inclusivity. During the months of September through December, during our monthly meetings, we had the membership. They discussed, they analyzed, they surveyed their departments. They got feedback from their coworkers, their department heads. Information back to our committee meetings, and shared that information into, we did breakout groups, so that individuals could be with different individuals at the committee during the different monthly sessions. And so we arrived at, after all of that analysis, and not being able to come to consensus on a single recommendation to move forward, our committee arrived at two options to recommend to the Executive Steering Committee. And so during the February meeting, our Executive Committee, with Amy, County Manager, made the recommendation that we add a floating holiday to the existing 12 days of the current holiday schedule. So there's an item on the Board's agenda that's one of the next ones, where we'll be considering the personnel ordinance update. So the personnel ordinance has to be updated to, to be, to be consistent with this, the action that the Board had taken earlier to approve the addition of the floating holiday. In addition to that, our, our personnel policy respecting to holiday pay and the holidays has to be updated. And along with HR, Brenda and I have been, we've had a work group working on updating that policy. And that, those updates are going to include, so this was a particular item of interest that our DEIAC members wanted to make sure that employees were made aware of the intent of the added day, that it's just not another day to be added to the schedule as a day off. It's a way to support diversity, inclusion, and so we have included language specific to that within the ordinance and within our policy update. Other points to highlight is that we're making it, we're, we'd like it to be effective June 1st of this year. Employees can begin requesting their day that will run through December 31st, on May 15th. That has to go through an approval process within their department, ending with the department head. And the day has to be taken as a day off of work. It's not just, so like, some, some employees have schedules that don't permit them to be able to take off on a, like, one of the regular 12 holidays. And so that's not what we want this holiday to be. It actually has to be a day taken off of work. And so those are just a few of the, of the stipulations that we have, that we've written into the policy. So getting us current up to date now, we now have a link on our website under the Board of Commissioners tab, that is for the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. So right there, whoa. If you click on, on that, it'll take you to this page, under the Board of Commissioners tab, and down below that page, there are active links that will take you to the, the resolution of the Boards against racial injustice, as well as our charter. So far as like the meeting dates went, fell in line with the, the timeline for approval to have the, the ordinance updated.
So, so Commissioner Keith, holidays are on a calendar year, not fiscal year.
Okay, so if they're on a calendar year, then they would be able to take the floating holiday from June 1st to?
December 31st.
So if someone had a holiday before that, they obviously could not have credit for it. I was just wondering why we're doing it all. I think I know why we should do it. I, I do want to say, for the record, that as much as you know, I brought this up with an opportunity to be more inclusive, specifically dealing with religious holidays to different people, and I don't believe that we have done that. I think what the decision is made is one of convenience. Holidays are still important, but the other holidays are not. But we're going to give you one day to celebrate those, but we're still going to have you take into consideration, it does not seem to me to be the idea of what an inclusive policy is going to be. I just, you know, we just had Good Friday, and everybody took it, took a day off regardless of what your religious affiliation or even what other religion of Christianity you may take. So it seemed to me this was a decision based on convenience more than inclusiveness of, and at, at the risk of, well, it, it seems a bit self-serving to just add another day, but not be as inclusive. And I know that I don't have this to support the rest of, I know, but I brought this up with the intention of purposely being able to, to protect and their religious holidays at the same level and be more inclusive with the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Madam President.
And Commissioner Keith, we, we recognize your opinion, and I would say that on behalf of the DEI Advisory Committee, they recognize, we all recognize, that this is an initial step, that this is not an all-inclusive fix-all to making our county holiday schedule completely inclusive.
But you will never go back and take away a holiday. It's okay, I know where it is.
Commissioner Keith, I think that the advisory, members of the Advisory Committee took this assignment very seriously, and I think that you may be pleasantly surprised that we talked about the issue of, of the religious holidays and the established holidays. And while employees may not, for example, take Good Friday, because those holidays are so entrenched in how we've done things, they use it for other reasons. And so they have other family members that are off Good Friday. They, they, they make vacation plans, even though they may not celebrate Good Friday, they still use that day off for what they, they select to, and, and that was the feedback we got from the employees in terms of those ones that get surveyed and those kinds of things. And so I just wanted to, wanted to share that, that was, that was, it was, it was discussed. We spent many hours on this, and just wanted to give you that feedback from the employees.
But that is a decision based on convenience and not inclusiveness, because there are still federal holidays that are recognized that we don't recognize at the state and county level either. And I, I, Brenda, it's, it's not, I'm not, I'm not mad, I'm just, it was not the intent of what I presented, and I, I, I don't believe most other religions have at least two holidays a year that they celebrate, whether it be in the Muslim faith, whether it be in the Jewish faith, or whether it just be 50% of our community, according to the consensus, considers himself nonreligious. So, you know, I, I know that things are entrenched, but the reason that we have a diversity, equity, and inclusiveness Council is because we're trying to get out of that trench. So it, it's just an opinion that, that I wanted to present.
Thank you. Thank you all for the presentation.
Thank you.
Madam President.
We'll move to item number four, and that is consideration of agenda items. And as Ms. Evans said, the first item for consideration is the actual amendment of Section 605 of the County Ordinance, which incorporates the changes into the holiday schedule. Mr. Morfield, the County Attorney, is going to present those changes to the Board for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Attorney Morfield.
The proposed changes to the 605 ordinance are presented in a red line format, since you can see, 605 ain't been what's in black font is existing language, what's in red font is new language, and it is one straight language. It also, what the agenda is also is to clarify adding full-time or part-time employees' benefits because notion of folks that are eligible for any, any holiday. And I have not, I don't know if the policies have been completely developed yet, but just seeing what, what was presented with the, I really, it's, this language came primarily from HR, and we helped to light it up, but my recommendation after hearing what proposed policy is that the second sentence to be added in subsection B just be eliminated in, in that section, B, B has stated it is, which says the County Manager shall develop and implement holiday paid administration procedures consistent with applicable federal and state laws.
Say that again, because that ain't what it reads.
It would just, if you look at Section 605, B, what it reads now is just the County Manager shall develop and implement holiday paid administration procedures consistent with applicable federal and state laws. That's what the best word says right now. The proposal is to add the County Manager shall develop and implement policies that administer the floating holiday grant herein after hearing the proposed policy.
But we've already voted, this is just a good order, we already voted on doing this floating holiday.
Yes, yes, but this is the language for the ordinance. Yeah, yes, sir, this is not, I'm, I'm just suggesting that I think we'd be, you know, in a more legal, all grouped together, we're going to call this a holiday, and we can treat it like other holidays, and that's it. Instead of separating out separate policies for the floating holiday, I think we'd be done off, we need to just.
So you're saying get rid of the reading?
Yes.
Get rid of the reading?
Just, just.
That's what you're talking about.
So, 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 and be? Any holidays will be, my thought, and it's, does that, does that make sense?
It does.
Because, because we do have, you know, and just, just to re-support, everybody doesn't always need to take more holidays now, because if you're principal needs stuff, and so we're already covering business needs in that, so I don't think we need to segregate the, the new holiday out, in particular with, if someone's seeking for religious purposes, I would just ask, my recommendation is that if we adopt this without the sentence in B.
Okay, so are you finished now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, because I was confused there. I heard a question and going back and forth, and I, I thought it was over with at that time.
I was just explaining the reason.
Thank you. Now, any, any questions for Attorney Morfield? If not, we have action on this, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, you'd be recommending it together.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend adoption of the ordinance as stated, except for under 604B, is to just leave it as it currently is, which is the County Manager shall develop and implement holiday paid administration procedures consistent with applicable federal and state law and in the period right there. That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bass, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner. All in favor?
Your vote, Mr. Mike House?
Yes.
Mr. Council? Commissioner Keith?
Aye.
Chairman Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
And Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you, Attorney Morfield. Madam President.
Item 4B is an item that the Board commissioned staff to look into, and that would be renovation options for the Board of Commissioners meeting, room 118 downstairs. I'm asking our Assistant Manager Tracy Jackson to introduce the item, as well as the engineering group and architect that have developed some recommendations for your
Good afternoon, sir.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
As requested, we have design concepts to provide to the Board regarding renovation options for room 118 of the Judge B. Maurice Praswell Courthouse and courtroom of the historic courthouse. These concepts were developed after discussions with six of the seven Commissioners, containing a high degree of detail. The general consensus of the Board was to create a space that was more polished and professional in appearance, but that also allowed citizens and visitors to feel welcome in the car. The emphasis here today is to make a clear departure from what exists in the current rooms. Please keep in mind that when we consider the historic courthouse, there are certain challenges with that building. challenges with that building. Specifically, there are, there are no existing technology or ADA capabilities. What is there is just very primitive and used by complaining. There are ADA accessibility issues, there's limited onsite parking during the day, there are differences in security capabilities, and there are no specific spaces for closed session. And there's also a potential need for elevator modernization in that building. At this point, I'd like to turn over the presentation to Russell Perlman, architect with the Witten Company, to go through the different concepts course. So, Mr. Rom, you'll come on.
Commissioners, very nice to be here with you, Chair, and I'd like to thank the county for this opportunity. I've enjoyed working with you all and with Matt of McGill as we came up with these two options for your consideration. What I'm going to show you today are eight slides. There will be four slides for each of the two buildings. The first building is the historic courthouse, where we would take the historic floor room and turn it into the commissioner's space. Those four slides that we'll look at will be as follows. The first slide will be demolition slide. It tells what we have to do to take out of that room so that we can repurpose it for the commissioner's space. The second slide will be the floor plan, and that shows you how the room will be configured as of, if you're looking down on it in a plan. The third slide is a surprising one, it's not one you'd normally think of, but it shows what happens on the ceiling. If you look at the ceiling, you can see, you know, there are all kinds of lights, those have effects on us, those types of things are very important to our experience, just like the things we see at this level are important. And the last slide that we're going to look at will be kind of an artistic slide, it gives you a three-dimensional view of what it might feel like to stand in the renovated space. So, uh, this slide, we put colors on it to try to help, in an architectural world we normally don't, but what I'm going to tell you is that the art area will come out for the demolition. And the art areas include the judge's desk, the witness box, the, um, the jury boxes, the ballast tray, the speaker's podium. We also take out the seating. We heard all the comments unanimously that seating felt a little tight, a little mean for your visitors as they're coming to the museum. We also take out just a little bit of this wall, which is not a historical wall, it was added later under the balcony area to put in a meeting room. Are there any questions about this before I move on to the new floor plan slide? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Are there any restrictions, is this, is this on the historical side?
It's on the National Historic Register.
Okay, all right, so is there any restrictions on these renovations?
There are restrictions on renovations to buildings on the National Historic Register. Most of them will happen on the exterior, so you have a little more leeway on the inside, but this is going to be contributing to the historic history that you have, that the outside is particularly important, the inside less so. I think if you look at your ceiling in this space, that will tell you that you have some latitude.
Yeah, thank you. Is there one, is seating capacity going to be in this building?
This currently is 159 in the visitors' area.
Okay, and according to your records, will you tell us how much is available?
I'm going to tell you that it is currently 159, and on the new floor plan, I'm going to show you how many people will be seated in there, and likewise for room 118, I'll give you those windows slide. So when we renovate it, when we renovate it, it will look like this, we would, we would end up with 117 seats. If we expand it back into the balcony area, under balcony area, which we were not charged to do, we were actually asked not to do that, but if we did, we'd get out another 40 or 50 seats in there. Everything in this beige color behind this desk is raised, and we have gracious steps on both sides, fulcrum steps to step up to the air with handrails. We also have means for disabled people to get up there as well, they come around here and then up the ramp, and at this point, they're on the day as well. Speaking of accessibility, we have a podium that doesn't just stand at this height, it's a three-part podium, its center is this height, the two parts on either side are wheelchair-accessible height, and we would have that microphone and, and connected technology-wise as well. That's a one, two, three heights there. These are the seats on the fourth slide. This area here is, I mentioned, the middle of the demolition. We demolished a little wall there so we could put in a, we could put in a PIO office there, and that PIO office is wired back to your electric door. You'll also see that dashed in here is a data cable above the ceiling that can handle all of your microphones, all of your notification lights that we need to send signals to the chair that someone would like to speak, or that a staff member would like to speak, anything of that nature.
Mr. Perlman?
Yes, sir.
As opposed to that being a PIO office, wouldn't that be a broadcast room?
You're probably right.
Okay, I just, yes, sir.
It's the room that you have your people in charge, and they ensure that the technology's working correctly, they observe the process-
Yes, sir.
And they-
Yes.
So that will have built-in cabinets that will hold the electronics. Just to show you a little bit about how the thinking went, the current interface of that wall, with your historic wall, is a little clumsy. In this case, what we did is we just put a swooning gate there, so that takes an opportunity to resolve that architectural issue, but also tells people not to go there if you're in the audience. Likewise, we've included ballast trays here and there that allow people to understand everything from this line back is for the officials and the other side. Also, these chairs are all movable because we were told that you may want to reconfigure the space for other types of events and things of that nature. So, on the window treatments, yes, sir. This is very exciting. This is your, this is your view of your reflected ceiling plan. What we've done is completely removed everything from the existing ceiling, including the existing ceiling. What we've done is we have looked at the historical drawings and put back in your coffered ceiling, done in woodwork to match the backdrop behind your judge's desk, which will match the curving commissioner's desk and four-seated support staff space below. You'll also find special lights above the commissioner's area, emergency lights. Another thing that we did is we took out the three large diffusers that you have. We only have three large diffusers in a ceiling, pumping a lot of air out of that at one time, and that is at a high volume, and it can be distracting, and it can stop, or be uncomfortable. We've taken out all of the ductwork supply and turned up there and put in brand-new ducts that evenly distribute at a more elegant pace of airflow than you're currently experiencing there. This is, these red boxes are very exciting. Those red boxes are, and they're funny, they're exciting. The red boxes are very large TV monitors that flip down as if you were in an airplane, and you must to flip down and face the audience. These two flip down and face the audience. And because the ceiling is so high, not only do they flip down, but they telescope down to a, to a better angle. This monitor flips down, faces the person speaking, podium, or any cameras that may be filmed in the ceiling. This camera, this monitor flips down so that those people seated at the commissioner's desk can see what's going on. The, uh, the panels can hold up to a 90-foot TV, not that you're going to get those if you want to, though you can see that. And now, this is what the room would look like. You can see the seating, the ballast tray, the three-height, um, three-height podium, the, uh, the elevated platforms, the gracious steps up, the sound attenuation panels, new window treatments, the coffered ceiling. We wouldn't look to try to find chandeliers that match yours, I couldn't illustrate them nicely, so I left them out. They are shown on the ceiling plan, and we would reuse those at the intersection of each coffer or something. Gracious executive-style desk chairs, evening light fixtures, which are used up in the ceiling panel, have a little something going on, a little more elegance to them. The carpet would be a tween texture, not something businesslike this, but more between a timeless look, something a little more formal, step it up just a notch. And between each of the positions at the commissioner's desk, we would have a removable acrylic clear panel like you would see here. This shows how the TV will drop down from the ceiling and then extend down further for the toilet users. So while I, before I move on to the room downstairs from 118, are there any questions about this courtroom in the historic courthouse?
Are there any questions? Thank you, Matt, sir.
Thank you. This will probably get a little faster, you're taller than the group, and you'll know that I'm talking about. Very interesting, this is the, the room 118 downstairs, the current desk, staff desk for Ford, who won the sign. You'll notice that this room is asymmetrical, that you enter off access, off the main access of the room from this room here. We resolve all of that in our renovation. So to do that, we take out, we take out this door and this piece of glass, you know, we salvage it to reuse later. Is there a question? Also, we're taking advantage of spinning this room all the way back in here to increase the capacity of the room, which is currently at 98. Very, very interesting thing that came up in our design as we were considering this, and that is, why can't I spin all the way down into this hallway as well? There's a lot of space there. Reason I can't is there is a bathroom here, it's the bedroom, you access it from that corridor, but we would have loved to grab that. I think you'll find that we've gotten enough as it goes. This door comes out because the audience flows a little further into the separation as we expand this room, and this wall, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you. This wall comes out so that it can be, um, used as a location of the new room. So even this, we have a partition down here that is used to separate these into two areas, that partition will come out. So we, we've tried to capture everything likewise, all window treatments, all ceilings, all ductwork, all lighting, all sound systems, all alarms, everything comes out. With, with the given space that we have, it really is a place to look at. You'll see the desk is a little tighter than we have because of the width of the, an historic courthouse. We still do have accessibility for disabled people coming around here, upper ramp, and then a ramp. This wall is put in to block these windows, and also kind of encompasses, covers encompasses the commissioner's desk, and gives it a sense of place. The wall does not come all the way up to the ceiling, though, it will stop a couple feet below the ceiling, and so it's almost like a stage setting center. And the other thing is, while we were grabbing this up for space, it allows the eye to travel all the way to the back wall, to give you that more spaciousness. This ceiling is a little low in here, I think we're at about 11 feet, it's not like a historic courtroom. And so we're trying to do everything we can to let this room fully open. The steps up, unfortunately, not as gracious as we found on those ceremonial steps in the historic courthouse, but we do have them on each side. And then when we come down, headed to the executive session area, we likewise have a ramp coming down and a step coming down where the commissioners can hold their executive sessions in this area. Seating, we're at 133 on this, up from 98, so quite a, quite a jump there. This is that AV room that you were asking about earlier, with a window overlooking and then a door that can close. Not sure if the final sign, which had built-in lock, cabinets, will make a room. You'll also see that taking the existing door and the existing glass and swapping it, get that central access down to the service room here, and that way, however whose commissioners have developed, audience in an awkward situation, squeezing through some of those long roads, that does not happen anymore, they're equal. Some spaces for handicap dispersed, the wall straight, three-height podium. The ceiling, everything I said about the historic ceiling holds true for this, with lighting types and whatnot, with the exception of, we don't have coffer in that, I don't have the height for it, it doesn't reflect the spirit of this building anyway, so we'll just go past that. This, I dashed it into it, know that it's happening, that that does not touch the ceiling if I mention, there's a space a day high that you would pass over that curving wall. And now we'll look at the three-dimensional of that room. Still very handsome. We took some of the formality and catalyzed the curving wall, adding molding to it, putting back in your seal at that center. You can see we still have the ballast tray separating the audience area from the commissioner's area. We also changed the carpet color in those two areas using a darker, a list of attractive blue tweed in the, in the commissioner's area, and going with a, going with the, they call it the meditate color, back in the audience area, that's the window of the room you're looking through. This is if you're seated about here, looking at the desk, you can see the podium, the curving desk, sound attenuation panels, window treatments. Different light fixture here, I can't go to the light that's, if I have a low ceiling, I don't normally like to put light, it's possible it's like this here, because it can be a little blind and make the ceiling seem dark. So we put a parabolic light there, that lets the light come down, but it shields the light source, so you're not looking at light bulbs. And so because of the low ceiling here, we've gone with the parabolic for the most part, although, although- although above this wall, I do have accent lights that wash it, and above the desk, I have, um, uh, more feature lights like, like that. All the lights throughout, whether they're in the audience or above accent walls or above desks in both buildings are fully done. Uh, and with that, uh, let me give you the cost of these two options. Option number one, I'm looking at a little less than 2.6 million. That's the historic courthouse. Option number two, the one I'm looking at here, I'm just a little more than 2.2 million.
So let me, uh, let me jump in at this point and also emphasize that this was high-end in terms of the finishes, in terms of the electronics. Um, a lot of the cost of these concepts involves the new work, the panel, the need to redo electronics and to bring it up to, um, standard in terms of broadcast capabilities and all the visual capabilities. So we, we started upon understanding that, that, you know, trying to get the look that was desired, but then we understand too, there needs to be further discussion about where to go with that. So we, we bring up TV today, uh, with some guidance, obviously. And, uh, this is what we have, and interested in hearing your comments and, and your suggestions.
Thank you for my initial announcement.
Commissioner King. Any questions?
Russell, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Um, can we go back to, actually?
Absolutely. Anyone want to look at this kind of slide for option?
No, no, just going up so we can use a reference. Yeah, but use that slide when you, when you know the slide that, the three-dimensional slide. Okay, I've got a couple of different questions. One is, um, can, is your idea that we'll replicate the look that, all the, the look that's in there now? And can we repurpose any of the historic pieces that are part of it in this concept?
That's a very good question, and I would say that-
For historical, not for money-saving, for historical.
I would say it's a, you know, it's, it's interesting, not that you're here talking to someone who's a member of the National Historic Preservation Society and have been for years. I've built town halls in historically designated areas. This is something that gives me goosebumps, it's a very important issue for me. Interestingly enough, things like the current jury boxes do not have matching finishes on the wood paneling there. So things have happened in there over time that I don't exactly understand. The entire, um, the entire dais is, uh, have been reworked over time. The witness stand is a little different than the judge's box.
So there's nothing, is it, it's not original then, is what you're saying?
I believe the judges, I believe the judges in the center behind here is original. This, I believe, is original. In my, in my notes on the new work plan, I even noted that because I'm taking down some desks in certain areas, new woodwork would have to happen from that height down and ask for that. This woodwork, it exists. So I've been hearing here, and expressing the contract there has to really be informed by what is there correctly in terms of finishes and materials, those quality level, those kinds of-
Okay, so my other two questions are, I, I may have missed it, but did you identify a place for a both session area for commissioners? In option one, and let me just go on to option two, she can roll along together, I mean to, just a question. Is, this building has a wonderful balcony that has been covered up. Uh, I mean, it, it really is a beautiful thing. Um, was any consideration even talked about? It may, may not have been in your R and B, but about the opportunities with the, uh, with the balcony? Because it seems like a perfect place to put the AV place, AVs up to, those churches do that. Oh, actually.
Two, uh, two questions, uh-
What session about?
Let me get those in order here. Uh, I believe, and, and people who notice the building better than I do will be able to address it, but, uh, I believe that something back in here, this was not a fire accident initially, but, and, and it's not drawn on the plan, so it's not something we can see, but I believe that some place behind the, uh, judges, the current judges' desk would be available for you to go to executive session. And not only that, to be perfect, because when going to executive session, what we don't want to have to do is walk the audience to get there. So in both options, option one, historic, and option two, room 118, executive session happens from behind, is access from behind, if you understand. The balcony. Both above and below the balcony have been closed off in an unfortunate, in an unfortunate style with materials that are not compatible, with wood paneling that has very thin, with wood paneling that has very thin repeat. I would like to take it all out. Uh, to get this commu- to get this, uh, historic commissioner's room to work, I have to take off all of the floorings there now. I have to assume that there is a lot of mass and packedness on top of that old tile wall. I don't know that the old tile wall is there, but if there was, it'd be like a towel on the outside in the waiting room for this room. After I take all that stuff off, I have to float that floor with a, after I take all that stuff off, I have to float that floor with a floor leveler made of either cementitious or gypsum material that will make it all flat. Why do I have to do that? Because I need to get something that will create a, uh, secure area from between here here, new carpet tiles to, and, uh, I don't know if you've ever seen this, but if there's any irregularity in a floor, it will telegraph through to your finished surface and be an aggravating thing for down to the end of time. So, um, also, all of that coffering was done to match the woodwork as well. So, uh, this was, this was something, what I was hearing from uniformly from all the commissioners, I suppose, was a sense of pride, a sense of ceremony, a sense of respect for the business that's occurring in the commissioner's room, and a sense of respect for the people who have come to observe this business occur. And they wanted that very effectively and strongly to be conveyed to everyone who entered the building. And so that was the approach that we took. Uh, this is, this is a 40-year room here we're talking about.
Any other questions? Madam Manager? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Council?
To the manager, is this in lieu of the addition that we talked about?
The gen- the general services building, is that, is that what you're asking about? A new facility down the road?
Yes. So we're in the process of beginning that feasibility study since we now have a county engineer on board with us. That feasibility study would look at, um, our building inventory and the need for another facility. We've been talking about grouping county services together, um, a- as you've just mentioned. I, I guess the question to the board is, um, that could be five or more years down the road before we had, um, uh, were able to move in. Uh, does the board want to move forward, um, with a renovation at some level? Or, uh, hold off until, um, we have another facility? I'm having difficulty thinking in terms of millions when, um, we have a great need here. So I have difficulty.
Any other questions or comments? So, Madam Man?
We were-
I'm sorry, you had a comment, I was-
No, he, he was looking to me, I was just saying we were just seeking some guidance and feedback.
So there was no action taken. But, and I just saw it today, that I would be my desire to mule it over. I looked at the two proposed, two points, six, two points, two, to make a decision today to do one or the other, just kind of-
No, I'm not asking for a final decision. I mean, we were just asking, did you want to move forward with anything or send us back looking at something else? I mean, we can certainly defer it.
No, I understood that, but I'm just saying, I, I really, and I, I like what I saw, but I didn't, even when I was talking over the telephone, I guess y'all should've told me when y'all asked me all these questions. The price tag was not in my mindset of two-some million dollars. That was the problem I had. I mean, that's, I just got to get around that concept of, uh, uh, and I, you know, if we move to another building, you know, is that a functional spot? Do we have to then change it back again for the court system to be able to use? If we build them, we'll be talking down the road though, so what do we do in the meantime? Is there an alternative to renovate it, make it look nice, short of 2.2 million dollars? I mean, that's, that's what's slipped through my head, and so for me to make a decision today is just kind of difficult. I mean, that's just, I, I'm glad I got the information, looked at it, come back, and, and be able to do that, but that's just me.
Yes, sir, Mr. King.
And, and Commissioner, I have a point. I, I was a little surprised too, what you were bringing about. Before you go there, Russell, thank you, thank you for your passion about this.
I wasn't even on the phone, he's passionate. The whole group, I gotta say, the whole group.
And I, I, I've always felt like the historic courthouse is, is sorely misunderstood, especially that room. And what we do as commissioners is the people's business. And the, the people, when, when they come in, this will give an opportunity for people to, first of all, you know, be able to appreciate the, the history and this, of the, of the building and be in an environment that is, that they can be proud of. When you start bringing in the technology of today, and we're gonna have a healthy price tag with technology, this would come into the neighborhood of a capital project. There is funding that we have because of good stewardship and other things that have been coming up. The capital funding can be available, um, if the desire is. And if the, if we stay here in the courthouse, we will always be in the courthouse sharing space.
That's great, that's, thank you.
I didn't want to say, sharing places, sharing parking, sharing everything that happens. Where in this place, it is somewhat, it is something special. And, and this will be the commissioner's room where county business is done, and it's done at a high level. Um, I, I, I know that there's a, a lot of work in the renovation, but the technology has got to be a big part of that budget that you're gonna get anywhere.
I've got, uh, you know, it's interesting, I, um, I was telling your staff that I do a lot of world researches of systems in, uh, recent time apart. We, we're going to put in their largest data center and, and computer lab there. These, these are rooms that are tech-packed, they're tech dens. It's not like a house where most of your rooms are bedrooms, living rooms, there's nothing in there except space. Everything here was a brand-new HVAC system, uh, HVAC system done for grills, diffusers. Everything was taken out, everything, every light, the alarm system, every, um, cable, all of that is new. Your sound system, uh, was comparable to what you would find in a very nice church in, in, in this.
So, Russell, if I could interrupt, so 2.5, do you believe is your high end?
Yes, I do.
Oh, okay.
I said 2.6, 2.6, don't go down, you never went down. I got it, Russell, I wrote it down now.
I got that, that was-
May I add something? That's for the building, that's for the room renovation. When Mr. Jackson spoke in the beginning, that, remember, the, um, the restroom facilities are very inefficient for a, a-
That quarter, what's your?
You haven't seen that. The elevator would need significant work. We don't even have fiber in that building where we have fiber here, so, um-
The cost's going up.
The cost would be more than 2.6 because of the other considerations, because of the nature and the age of that building. So I just, I don't want to throw water on it, but it-
Would there ever be a better time than right now to do this construction?
No, but I don't want to come back next meeting and, and surprise you with that.
Now, how long do you think construction would take on either one of these?
I believe, uh, the contractor I showed this to said, uh, six to nine months. Uh, I think it's five to six months. And if the actual real real number was 2.575, this is-
Two what?
2.575.
All right, one final thing for this chair, and I appreciate you giving me this lead. If we decide to go to option one, we can continue to operate here. It's as we have been for those six to nine months. And, um, Russell, I'm gonna take the six to nine months, because usually they, and so, but if we decide to renovate here within locally, we're gonna have to relocate ourselves.
Today.
We're gonna have to relocate ourselves to someplace that is not gonna have technology. Citizens are not gonna be able to have as, as good a communication, the light, you know, everything will happen. We're gonna be in, it, it's, we can stop one day, move into it on the next meeting if we decide on a separate location as opposed to renovating our current place. So I, I, you know, I'm kind of like Commissioner Lancaster was the other day, you know, I'm ready to make a motion, but if, if there's other questions that need to, that be asked, uh, I would-
Are there any more questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Lancaster.
Let's kind of look at the longevity of this building plus the longevity of the whole courthouse. You know, we discuss from time to time about, um, our space and the court system needing our space. And I guess for me, it would be which of the two would probably be in our best interest? Now, you know, that 40-year-old one over there, you know, I, I used to play there as a little boy. I, I'm very familiar with the, I was not incarcerated.
I didn't even wonder, you know, the jail was over there, so.
But I used to play there, you know, I, I would, I personally would like to be in that old courthouse and, and for a lot of reasons. But I, I, I wonder, do we spend the 2.2 downstairs and hope that that's it in our lifetime? Or do we move across the street and spend, you know, the 2.2 or whatever uh, and, and kind of refurbish that building as we move forward? Uh, that's, that's the $64,000 question for me. However, I'm like Jenny. We've talked about that building, we've talked about that building, and I know that's a lot of money, but everything is a lot of money now. We talk about building schools, look at the new, new price tag of school.
Almost $250 a square foot.
Uh, so the days of bargains are over. Uh, and it's just a decision we'll have to make collectively, and, uh, I don't know which of the two, but I'm in favor of one or the two, and let's get moving, Jenny.
Okay.
Matt, ask a question. Would it be helpful for comparison purposes for us to have engineering continue to work with Mr. Pearlman and Matt Jones and get the rest of the cost for the historic courthouse? Because you, it, it don't, would, I, I think in order to help you make, um, a decision, wouldn't you need to know the other cost of renovating, uh, making the adaptations to that building itself?
Commissioner Adams?
That makes sense, but here's my question for the board, is are we gonna move? Because if we're gonna move in the next year or two, why put two- Because if we're going to move in the next year or two, why put 2.2 million dollars downstairs uh, as opposed to putting it across the street? And I understand your question. But then that to me is a waste of 2.2 million dollars if I'm only going to use it for a year. Or we only going to use it for a year or two years? So I guess, and that's why I sent Jenny to think about, is that I think we, and I think the CIP on here for down further agenda to reiterate where our priorities are. But if then one of the priorities we have is moving out of this building and create another, that building, if we put it over at the old courthouse, even if we build a new one, we continue to still use that. Plus we can start charging the state for doing their hearings over there. So anyway. But there are so many uses that, so I don't want to waste 2.2 million by putting something here that we not going to use in a year or two. See what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
And so it's good to have those other costs. We need to know that. But I mean, I'm kind of hilarious that, you know, 2.2, 2.75, I don't think, but that's a lot of money. But anyway, it's that, um, the usage, the life usage of.
Agree. I mean, it's a kind of a thing. Why would you put your money into a building that you may or may not be in a while?
Right. You're going to leave. I'm not going to sell it.
Honestly, to me, Madam Manager, the cost is going to be what the cost is. I mean, it is. And if we make a decision and we're going to move forward with it, and even if it's another $500,000, it's money that we're going to have to put somewhere. And it seems to be the appropriate, that building's been there for 100 years.
But here's my other question I would ask, so that we don't get into what we got out at the ground. Once we charge, start charging, changing stuff, do we have to do all ADA compliance throughout the building? And the cost then rises? So that's kind of my question. You changed the elevator, you changed some things, but there are a whole lot of other things over there that's not ADA compliant. We probably grandfathered under now. But once you start making some changes, and I don't know who, Rick or whoever answered that question, if you start making changes and it fools you out of that, then the cost still goes even higher as you move up these steps. I don't know.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. I mean, it was, if, if the, if the building is accessible, the, the whole thing's got to be. Now, we, we have parts of that building already closed off.
But it's historical. It's on historical deed.
Oh shit, that doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
I need to be able to get the public into the surfaces that they are, uh, should be available to avail themselves to. Uh, so they need to be able to get into that room. And I, I did make, uh, this room accessible, uh, and provided access. We have to provide access from the parking lot into this room. I need to provide access to restrooms. And I also need to make sure that the elevator can take a wheelchair. I don't have to do this up to the point of being an undue burden. I don't have to do this no matter what. So, uh, there is a limit to the amount, uh, that one would have to spend on accessibility upgrades.
Commissioner Council?
I have trouble visualizing any million dollars over in that building. Any use. No, I mean, but that's like me going to get a face.
I then.
Do the rest of the building. And I mean, we got so many problems and so many needs. What?
Okay, I agree with you. It needs to be upgraded.
One question. I'm enjoying looking at this, but I'm a whole lot more of a visual learner than what I've seen today. Would it be possible sometime as we move forward to let's take a visit over there? Uh, I'd like to walk around and, and maybe somebody show me what you talked about. When you're talking about a handsome place, when you're talking about beautiful, and you're talking about exciting, I'd like to go and feel the same emotion and walk around and see when some of these, you know. Mr. Chairman, where, what it's going to look like, and I can visualize it better. And I think we might have, I know what downstairs looks like. I haven't been over there in a long time.
Okay, sir. Would you like to put that into a motion?
That we make a visit? Anybody opposed to a visit before I make a motion?
I'll move it to the next agenda session, next session, so we know where it's going to show.
Then that would be my motion, yes.
Okay. Restate the motion, please, sir.
That, that we make a visit to the old courthouse and then we, uh, discuss it further and we move it forward to another agenda session?
It's next, next month.
Next, yes, next month.
It's the second.
Second. And, and, and those visits don't have to be a whole board visit. I mean, it could be individual, however. The, the staff can do it. If more than one was going, or at least a couple of dates, if two of us can go, three of us can go.
Sure.
Two of us can go ahead and ask them. So we don't have a, have to schedule it as a meeting and put open space. Yeah.
Yes.
We pay him, he come.
Schedule with our staff.
There is a second to the motion. On the paper.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you so, thank you so much. Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. Item 4C is consideration of the Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization multimodal congestion management process. And today, we're, I'm glad to have here with us our interim chancellor director, Ms. Belona Brand. Important, Mr. Brand, thank you for being with us.
Thank you so much for being here.
I've opened up here that long this afternoon. Right into it. The Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, or FAMPO, must develop a multimodal congestion management process in the Fayetteville metropolitan planning area. You may be wondering, what is a multimodal congestion management process? And before I answer that question, I'd like to give you a little background about metropolitan planning organizations. A metropolitan planning organization, or MPO, is a federally mandated and federally funded transportation policymaking organization that was created to ensure regional cooperation in transportation planning. MPOs were introduced by the Federal League Highway Act of 1962, which required the formation of an MPO for any urbanized area with a population greater than 50,000. So what is a multimodal congestion management process, or CMP? To summarize, a congestion management process is a systematic approach for managing congestion that provides accurate, up-to-date information on transportation system performance. And it assesses alternative strategies for congestion management that meet state and local needs. The multimodal component incorporates different modes of transportation into the process. FAMPO is designated MPO for the Fayetteville metropolitan area. FAMPO is also designated as a transportation management area, or TMA, since the population is over 200,000. Federal requirements state that all TMAs shall develop and implement the congestion management process as an integrated part of the metropolitan transportation planning process. As a TMA, it is a federal requirement for FAMPO to develop and implement a CMP. FAMPO has already programmed and allocated a total of $200,000 in work on the CMP to begin this fiscal year and completed in fiscal year 2022. The project has been reviewed by the county budget and finance staff. FAMPO is requesting both approval from the board, as it is required for the execution of the contract to begin the work on the project, and for this item to be placed on the consent agenda of the April 19th regular meeting. This concludes my presentation, and, and I'll be happy to ask any questions.
Are there any questions from the board and discussion? Madam Manager, if anything, would you like to say?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Commissioner Adams?
And I would tell you, uh, for this board, I sit on the FAMPO board, and we thoroughly reviewed all of these. And I will make a motion, approval of the FAMPO multimodal congestion management study to be implemented by the DOT, um, the Department of DOT, pre-qualified consultant firm. And item B placed on the consent agenda for the April 19th meeting.
Okay, okay. Before we vote, uh, Commissioner Council? Okay. It's been moved to the second all the paper?
Yes.
Chairman Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation. You do the same. Madam Manager?
Yes, item 4D is a use and occupancy agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the Norris Sewer System. And, um, you've already met our county engineer, Jermaine Walker, but this is his first official meeting, agenda session presenting with us today.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Chairman and Commissioners, uh, what we have before you is a, a use and occupancy agreement with, uh, the North Carolina DOT for the Northern Cumberland Regional Sewer System. Just a brief background, uh, the NC DOT is widening I-95 from a business, uh, 95, uh, US 301, which is vicinity at Murphy Road to St. Road, 1001, uh, which is a vicinity at Let Hawkins Road. The work necessitates the relocation of portions of, uh, 8H Force Main Sewer crossing the I-95 at Wade 7th Road and then 8H driving sewer line across Dawken Road. In order to facilitate this, the NC DOT has requested a use and occupancy agreement from the county through the county's Public Utilities Department. All work will be funded by NC DOT. And NC DOT, NC DOT has requested the proper permitting, uh, through the North County Department of Environmental Quality. Uh, the contractor, RKK, uh, which the NC DOT used as its primary contractor, uh, will coordinate with the NC DOT and the utility owners during the installations of, uh, water and sanitary sewer lines for any necessary shutdowns or bypass pumping. Uh, this probably affects, uh, 470 customers. Uh, the NC DOT's special provisions binds the contractor to guarantee workmanship in material against all latent and patent defects. Uh, and that's arising from any faulty materials that the contractor may or may not decide to use, workmanship or negligence for a period of 12 months after acceptance. Now, keep that in mind, this project will not be accepted until there's joint inspection between our office, PWC, and any other representatives of Norris, uh, uh, stakeholders. Uh, and then finally, uh, we propose that the Public Utilities Department of, uh, and County Management recommend that item be placed on the April 19th, uh, 2021 Board of Commissioners' agenda and the Norris Water and Sewer District governing board agenda as a potential item.
Hey, are there any questions?
Is that big enough for it being the, the, to carry that water? I mean, that's kind of the problem we got down at Lock Creek. They didn't widen the main when that water starts. I mean, and I'll leave that to you. I just, just make sure that that's, that's large of all that problem with that. But that was, that's the problem we got down at Lock Creek. It's when they, uh, did the road, the pipe just can't carry all that water in Lock Creek just floods every, every time it rains.
Yes, sir.
Are there any more questions or comments? If not, Commissioner Council?
That we followed the recommendation as spread.
Is that a second?
Second.
On the paper?
Your vote, Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Evans?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your presentation, sir. Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. Item 4E, um, was a request for some information on the FY22 proposed budget. So, uh, I'm more than happy today to give you a high-level look of where we are with the budget process. Last year with COVID, we were unable to meet with all of the departments in preparing the budget. This year, we thought it was important to sit down with each department and hear from them about their needs and their requests. So from a high-level point of view, this year, we have $23 million in additional requests, expenditure requests above the FY21 adopted budget. That includes a million and a half in new positions. The departments have asked for an additional 1.1 million in operating costs. We have 1.4 million dollars that we need for recruitment and retention, that third phase of implementation. Uh, from the public safety standpoint, body cameras at a cost of almost 3 million have been requested as well as a record management system, uh, 1.2 million in radio replacements. I believe it's somewhere around $2 million. Fayetteville Community, uh, Fayetteville Technical Community College has requested an additional $1 million in operating funds. And Cumberland County Schools have requested an additional $7.4 million. We have an aging, uh, vehicle fleet, and that request is about $4.3 million. Uh, technology upgrades of about 1.3, maintenance repairs of a million. And that really totals back to that $23 million. Now, these requests are funded by non-restricted revenues in the general fund, agglom taxes, motor vehicles, and sales tax. And so let me give you a feel for the average annual growth in those three unrestricted sources. Over a five-year period, the average growth is about 2.4%, which equates to about $4 million. So you have about $23 million in new requests and $4 million of potentially available revenue. Now, we have not finalized our revenue projections. It's still early. So as you can see, we still have a lot of work to do between now and May 27th to prevent, prepare a balanced recommended budget for, um, your review. And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is item 4F. It's a request for information on the American Rescue Plan funding. And so I thought I would give a brief update today. As of today, we have not, uh, received any guidance from the US Treasury. As you know, uh, there was some information in the bill that was passed, but the bill also stipulated that it would be the Treasury that would be, um, issuing very specific guidance. Entities will be audited, and if you don't spend according to those guidelines, then you have to pay the money back. We believe now that it could be another 45 to 60 days before that guidance is issued. However, we, staff is already preparing, um, for, um, in the planning stages. So we've developed a team. Um, I'll be a part of the team, but leading it will be a. I'll be a part of the team, but leading it will be Assistant Managers Sally Shutt and Angel Wright-Lenier. Vicky Evans, our Finance Director, and Yvonne Mendez, who's with us today, will also serve on that team. Those two individuals will be critical to that team. With the CARES funding, Vicky and Yvonne worked very, very closely with that federal guidance and the stipulations because it changed from month to month to day to day. And they did a tremendous job working through that process, so they'll be a part of the team as well. We also will have our Grants Manager, Sula Bantasolas. She will also be a part of that extended team. And of course, we'll need to include budget, county budget, and then we'll bring in other departmental personnel as needed along the way. We are already engaged with the lobbyists, trying to get as much advanced information as we possibly can. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that's really all I have today for that. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments for our manager?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Adams?
And that might be too broad, but I think that, thank you for that update. I think that there's not a whole lot you can do until you get those guidelines. I think that one of the things we have to be careful of as we send directions to that committee is that this is one-time funds and definitely should not be reoccurring expenses. I think we, and y'all probably know that, but I think it needs to be that we all on the same page that these funds are, it's a one-time thing. But I think that we need to be diligent in this because we don't want to look here five years and have gotten $65 million of this money and don't have anything to show for it. So I think we got to be really diligent in what we do. But this money, again, and I've talked to some members of the Board and to the manager, is just the tip of the iceberg. This is the one that has passed. There's also the American Jobs Bill that's sitting in Congress now that it will, that will come along. And also, some of the things that might be in this American Rescue, might be in that American Jobs that you might be able to use this money for. So I think we got to be, even as we move forward, have to be a little bit broad, but bring it down to make sure that we know that. Then I don't know, and I know y'all probably haven't been, because I know we just got this yesterday, the one for Richard Hudson, which is due next week. I mean, it's due like Tuesday. And if you read through it, I don't even know how he expected anybody to do all of this by Tuesday. I hope y'all can, but, Mr. Chairman, somebody's going to have to meet way before then. But that money is only, can only be spent in 20, in '22. So it's not even that you get to use this money. So whatever project you do out of the funding from Richard Hudson has to be a one-time thing that can be done in '22 almost. So as you talked about that, if you read through this, it was different agencies. When we talk about those body cams and stuff, that might be what needs to be in this. If you look at this, it's clearly within that Commerce, Justice, Science and Related Appropriations. So I would tell us, I know that they've asked for it, you may want to look at that because this has to be in by Tuesday. You got to get the mayors and everybody involved. You got to have a whole lot of stuff on this document. This, I mean, it came out April 7th, but I guess I would ask, maybe you all can, I don't know if anybody looked at it, did anybody not look at it? Can you tell me the difference between what he has in here, where he talks about it has to be in by April the 13th, but then he also has, got to have it right by April 16?
April 13th is the internal deadline to come to the county because the county is to prioritize, which goes to the, the deadline to the Hudson Office is April 16.
Okay, that's what, so the 13th is what, everybody, who sends that back to us?
It's due to a municipality or a nonprofit.
Or the city or anybody.
Yes, sir.
And then we, then the county is going to prioritize that, talk to those entities because you got to get letters of support from everybody to be able to submit it to Representative Hudson's office on by the 16th. So y'all have got to give yourself about three days to get all of that. Prioritize and get the letters of support from all of these individuals.
Yes, so Commissioner Adams, we were notified midday on Thursday. Friday was a holiday and then these ladies behind me started first thing Monday morning trying to get the letters out and understanding it, so.
I mean, it's a short turnaround, I mean.
Yeah, I didn't want you to think we sat on it.
No, no, no. You couldn't have sat on this because it just came out. I mean, if you read through this document and got any work done, it's tremendous because the turnaround time and the fact of the matter is, we're competing with other counties and Fort Brad. And so whatever you see and in your ship, get up to Congress and it still may not be funded, but, I mean, it's, it's, well, I think we got to be really focused on what it is that we submit. I know it's a number of items, but you got to prioritize this. Whatever it is we submit has to be something that, that's why I said, you know, when you're talking about justice and body cams and all of that, but it's, I saw the stuff, the Health Department could do some stuff. I mean, it's, it's a number of things that needs to be, that we can look at.
Well, I know I was, I happened to be with the manager on Tuesday and they were going through it then and trying their best to explain to me what it entailed, so they are definitely on this.
Yes, ma'am.
I was ready to make a motion, but we didn't, we don't need good.
Well, I guess the question is, it is April 13th, April 16th deadline, would it ought to be this, and I guess I didn't get to that point. This Board should decide on that priority. So I mean, when are we going to meet to be able to do that? That's, I guess that was my, that's what I'm trying to get to. Not so much what staff is doing, staff are going to do what they got to do. But eventually, whatever these priorities are, needs to be done by this Board in terms of what it is that we want. Like I said, it's only for the 22 year. Some of it can be spent, there's some veteran services. We wanted to build your veteran services building or whatever, but I mean, it's all kind of stuff.
I thought it was.
Y'all could be working hard long nights and I'm not, and I don't envy you all, but I just think it's.
Yes, Commissioner Keith?
I think everybody recognizes a short timeline and the requirement that you get nonprofits, community groups, and other government bodies to give letters of endorsement. I think ultimately, it comes down to the decision of the counties to bring it forward. It's going to be very difficult to bring the whole board together before this happens. So, you know, I don't know if the chairman wants to identify a group or something just to work with staff and then pass out to other commissioners. There wouldn't have to be a vote, would there have to be a vote before it gets forward?
No, but we certainly, I mean, management's going to look to the Board to help figure out what our priorities should be.
I think there has to be some consensus. I don't, I don't know that we need a work group. I think that if staff sends it out, everybody can make their recommendations back and then we can figure out what the, what the priorities are. But I just think there has to be some input from, from this Board.
Yeah, but the difficult part is too, if you read through it, is you really don't have much money to talk about. I mean, is this, it'll be a $10 million project?
Well, no, if you go back farther, they do put some limitations on how much the money is and how much you can get and if you got to spend it within that period of time.
We're competing against, I'm sorry, it should be more clear, another county that has very low population, you know, or is, the congressional representatives have a
Earmour. It's basically Earmour.
Are they going to treat the same population as a greater population at the same level as they would a smaller population? So you don't really know.
Well, if I may ask, Madam Manager, is there any way that you could possibly meet with Commissioner Adams and you all come up with a plan and get it back to us?
Certainly, whatever the Board's desire is, certainly. Okay.
So what's the desire of the Board?
That's a winner because you're not going to get a whole board together.
Right, right, and so.
Because I think when I read it, it was written, this is so.
Well, I, well, I tell you what, I would like to see Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Keith meet with our manager and come up with a plan for us, okay? That clear?
Do what?
That's it, they did.
I thought you just said that you were putting the vice chair.
I did. I had to meet with your manager.
It's not that I don't like you, but you never felt anything you want to agree with 100% just with you. You assume it's back.
Okay, Madam, if I could get the attention back to me?
No.
I asked Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Keith if they will meet with the Madam Manager and if I would have planned.
Understood.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Manager.
Item 4G is the strategic objectives for the Board's priorities. And this is a follow-up to your planning priority session that we held in February. At the end, as you may recall, staff committed to developing objectives and metrics to coincide with your priorities. And today, we, those were sent out in advance in your packet. Today, I believe we have copies and Sally's going to slowly go through them. We're, we want your feedback, any changes, happy to answer any questions. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Sally Shutt.
Can I ask one question real quick on this?
Yes, sir.
Because I thought when we met and we did these, we didn't talk about the ones we already had, but they said those weren't going to be moved, but I don't see those in here, the ones that we already completely had. These are the ones we did that day, but they moved the other ones and said, we're not going to talk about these because these already are strategies, but they're not in this plan.
So what we did was really focus our efforts on the, on these. Not that we've forgotten the other ones, so that was an oversight on my part. We can certainly go back and develop objectives and metrics.
Because, because we just didn't include them in these. So when we talk about these and we put priority one, priority, I don't know that they're priority ones because we had those other.
Well, these were in priority order. These were ranked by, by the group. Okay.
I'm sorry, just don't think it was that way when we talked at that meeting.
Okay, I apologize.
All right, so that, there were seven priorities. And, okay, what you have before you, management and staff were passed with, meeting with the, or calling up with the Commissioner Lennate-Solans and developing objectives, action steps, and key performance indicator for each of the seven priorities. And those priorities were Performing Arts Center, the Gray's Creek Public Water Access, Countywide Public Water Offices, Government Communication, Economic Development, and County Facility Asset Inventory and Audit. So in your handout, you'll, you have on each page, and we'll go through it, I'll call it, I'll bring up the document on the screen as well as we go through. So under Performing Arts Center, there were two objectives, complete market analysis and feasibility study, and then board direction based on results of the market analysis and feasibility study. You can see what the action steps are on page one and then the key performance indicator. So what today we hope to do is for you to consider these priorities and objectives to provide us feedback and then to move this forward to the April 19th regular meeting. So are there, is there any feedback on the action steps and KPIs for the Performing Arts Center?
Yes, Commissioner Keith?
I know we had put the analysis on hold for COVID and there are starting to, the world is opening up.
Right.
Is there been any consideration to re-energize the study?
So we are having conversations now with Spectra about the timing, about moving forward.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so that is the Performing Arts Center priority. There's actually six other questions or comments for those. All right, priority two, the Gray's Creek Water, Public Water Access. There were three objectives under naturally sustainable water system to address Gen X contamination in the Gray's Creek District. Partner with PWC as the primary water provider and then identify funding sources for cost of extending water lines. For each of those three objectives, those action steps and key performance indicators are listed. Are there questions or feedback on this priority? Countywide Public Water Priority, explore a long-term plan to extend public water throughout the county. That is the one objective under that priority. There were three action steps to update the 2009 countywide water study, conduct the financial, financial feasibility study and seek funding sources. Any questions or feedback on that one? The fourth priority, homelessness. For that objective, for that priority, there were four objectives. Should work with a homeless consultant to develop the three-year homeless strategic plan, assessment of the current programs and resources, the needs assessment and gaps analysis. Homeless Strategic Plan. The action steps are listed. The timeline is listed here under the first action step and those action steps pretty much follow the phases of the study.
A quick question. And, oh, you're not finished with that yet? No, no, are you finished with the homeless?
No, I'm not. I was waiting for feedback.
Okay. Help me to understand, what's the three-year strategic plan?
What is the three-year strategic plan?
Yes.
Well, they're, they're going to be looking and coming back, they're doing the gap study.
Oh, they're going to come back with the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. The consultant that's been hired is right now conducting research. That community survey has gone out and they're interviewing stakeholders and doing their, doing their research. And then they're going to come back and present you, the Board of Commissioners, with that strategic plan.
Okay, I guess I, I guess I'm blown a little bit by the three-year strategic plan.
Oh.
That's what, okay.
Yeah, maybe it's, you know, sometimes you have short-term goals, but you have long-term goals, so they're looking.
Got you, got you. Yes, Commissioner Keith?
So with this, with this new consulting group, Board, Board, they are, who is going to, is their point of contact? Are they going to be going through community development or, because this was initiated by the Commissioners? So, they had a tele, they had a startup teleconference that they already had that.
Dee Taylor, who is our Community Development Director, is here. So I think Dee, I would rather defer to Dee to come and answer those questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. In response to your question, we did have a startup conference prior to them.
Dee, I guess the question is, this was initiated by Commissioners and it's been a passion of some of our Commissioners. But what, I, I saw the RFP, but what did, what did Community Development tell them about what the vision is of the Commissioners for the startup plan? They're, they're just assessing the homelessness situation. Are they going to make recommendations to it?
Yes, sir.
Because they haven't, have you been contacted?
Not.
But, so, I, I don't, I guess I wonder why Commissioner, when do Commissioners lose the tether on this project since they, they brought it up and now alls we're going to do is at the end of it, we're going to get their report, but they haven't gotten any feedback from us.
And they plan to come back with, again, their recommendations, but they will. but they will still be obtaining your feedback, um, based on, because there's two, um, surveys that are out. This is again, Sally mentioned, there's the provider or stakeholders survey, and there's the community survey. Um, but in probably within between phase, um, two and three, after the assessment and comparing with other similar communities, they will come back with a, a draft. But, um, that will be the time when they will obtain your, um, feedback as well prior to finalizing the, the three-year strategic plan.
But during the startup teleconference, you had any representative or yourself?
Yes, sir.
What, what did you tell them the, our concerns were?
Well, based on my understanding, uh, you wanted, that's just my understanding, that you needed information on, uh, basically, I guess the big question is, what are the gaps and services that exist in our community? That's my understanding.
But was, is that out there, understanding?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, can I be ready?
Yes.
Uh, is what, they are not done with the work, they're going to work with significant amount of community groups and, and you all, and the teleconferences. I think you were one of the ones that committed that, um, was interviewed for the data resource. And just like you got your input for that.
Yeah, for the city side.
Yes, for the city side. You had an opportunity, my pleasure, to, you know, give her your input. So this is not at all going down. There'll be significant amount of community input as well as.
And I don't need to speak for the chairman, but if it was his initiation, I feel like we're just getting it at the end without, but if you say they're going to be, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
And they just started, uh, putting out, uh, to gather information, conducting their assessment.
And then quick question, where's the surveys at?
Pardon?
The surveys that you said that are out?
Yes, sir.
Where are they at?
Um, well, there is a link, um, there was a press release that was done. And, uh, so the link is on our county website.
Okay.
For the community, and I, and I know, uh, she, when she put it out there, uh, maybe just within a couple of days.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There was a couple hundred already that had responded to that.
On the website.
Yes, sir.
And so that's the only place that they could do the, that individuals can do.
Oh, they, they, they can complete their, uh, paper, paper version as well.
They can all of us.
Yes, sir.
Did we all do? That's how you get some feedback too.
Are there any more questions back on the homelessness priority?
That they were coming. So when we got, when we got the link written there, that was coming.
Yeah, you could hit the link. It's still out there. It's not, you can't do it.
I can read forward that to everybody, the press release that went out. And, um, then I can just send it, the link to you.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, any other feedback or questions about the homelessness priority?
I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am. This is Commissioner Stewart.
Do the public know that there's a survey out? And if they do, how do they know this?
Uh, Commissioner Stewart, um, so we received the information, and this is Sally Chut speaking. We sent out a press release and it, um, was on the, it was actually picked up by the Fayetteville Observer and CBS seventeen, ran a story about it. And then the link is on the homepage where they can go, um, to do that.
I think the city also sent it out.
The city, and then, um, emails were sent to, um, community groups as well, I think.
Okay, my concern is that people are not accustomed to going to Cumberland County website.
Um, we shared it.
So that's.
Yes, ma'am. I also shared it on social media as well.
Okay, um, and my second question is, have you received any response?
Ms. Taylor, have any?
Uh, just, I know after a couple of days, it was over two hundred and, two hundred thirty so far.
Ms. Taylor reported that after a couple of days, there were over two hundred and thirty responses.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one, one more question. Um, I love everything that Sally and her team does, everything. I think they do a fantastic job, and I'm not being critical of them at all. But what I'm saying, what I think, that there are times that there are information that need to get out to the best, to the majority of our community, and they're not receiving the information. Um, I think that there should be other media outlets that use, I know you sent out a press release and they go that, but sometimes we don't have to spend money for information to get down because it just doesn't get out along. And, and, um, that's just my, good sense. But thank you. It's about that.
Commissioner Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I absolutely agree. People are not reading the Fayetteville Observer. One, if they don't subscribe to it, they're not, they're not getting a lot of the information unless they subscribe to it. Um, I don't know how many followers we have on social media. Um, I try to share everything, um, that comes across from Cumberland County, um, on their social media outlet, but I'm just one person, and my following is limited as well. So I, I would like to see us, um, really push this so that we can, um, get some good feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Lancaster.
Uh, I agree. I agree with what Dr. Stewart said. Maybe soon we could look at some other alternatives. You know, Commissioner Evans said if we got to spend some money, let's find out where that money trail takes us. We have to run ads, we have to do TV. I mean, if that's what our chairman is interested in, I'd be interested in some of your suggestions that you can relay to staff, and then we can talk about it as a whole.
And, um, and I appreciate your comments, Commissioner. Um, my interest is solely that everyone in Cumberland County gets the information that needs, so that we could do the job of the people and hear from them if they, but they got to hear from us. And that, that's just the part I make. We got to be a little more crystal clear in getting information out the very best way that we possibly can, Commissioner Council.
What about the organization? Is there a little flyer or something that can be placed at the place where homeless individuals receive assistance?
Yes, yes, ma'am. We've been working with our providers.
Providers.
I saw some people learn to get food.
It's being broadcast.
I mean, well.
Yes, ma'am. We're working with our, our local providers and, um, asking them to go, um, with completing the survey, helping, uh, potential, uh, their customers with completing the survey. Um, and, yeah, it's, yes, ma'am, issuing, uh, doing a little bit more outreach.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And that's the next priority is government communication. And the first objective is to improve internal communication and employee access to information. You can see those action steps and key performance indicators listed there. Objective two is improving external communication as to our community, our citizens, by updating the website design and functionality and providing excellent social media and web content to better inform and engage with residents. Objective three, three is to improve and expand digital media production for CCNCTV and other web channels. Objective four, improve intergovernmental communication and maintain strong relationships with municipal, regional, state, and federal officials. And the fifth priority, our objective, is to develop, launch, and promote web applications to improve citizen and employee engagement. So that goal spans from your booklet on page, uh, six to page nine. Are there any questions or feedback for the government communications?
Are there any questions? If not, uh, there ain't. Thank you. There's no action to be taken on this, correct?
I'm sorry, I did not hear.
Is there any action to be taken on this, ma'am?
Um, this will be taking your feedback, and then it will be going to the full agenda. I mean, your meeting on April nineteenth. We still have, uh, economic development. The objective is to close any remaining service gaps and ensure affordable access to dog ban, identify and develop infrastructure, serve industrial sites to support job creation, expand support, support for expungement efforts and re-entry programs, and connect with key business sectors. One of those action steps in that is to, um, engage with the board on some site visits with, with, um, site visits are conducted.
Site visits, sure. Yeah, I missed that. Site visits.
Site when, um, industries come in. Connect with key business sectors.
You said site visits.
Yes, yes. Um, join STEDC staff on select existing industry visits. I'm sorry, not site visits, but their, their existing visit industry. That's to, um, help create that handed dialogue with our local companies on issues they're facing and how best the county can support their growth.
That was the local people, not necessarily the city people. It was kind of, I, I just want to make sure that what you said was the site visits.
Right.
That, that, that priority was maintaining what we got so we didn't lose it.
Yes, and to create the dialogue with them to understand the needs. Economic development, were there any questions or feedback on that? All right, we're down to number seven, which is the County Facility Asset Inventory and Audit. First objective is to perform a feasibility study for a general government services building. Objective two, perform a space utilization study of all county facilities. Objective three, perform an ADA accessibility assessment of all county facilities. Objective four, identify life cycles of all county facilities and associated critical building infrastructure. And objective five, the centralization of custodial and facility services across the county departments. With the board priorities. As a historical look back, the model began with capital project priorities that were set back in the fall of twenty seventeen. Two of the original projects have already resulted in debt issuance until no longer are on the list. And so that includes the Emergency Operations Center Project and the STCC Higher Training Center Project. Facility studies are budgeted in this current fiscal year for two of the capital projects. Um, that includes Grace Creek Water and, um, the county facilities. In regard to, um, the requested changes, the fiscal year ending column, that, um, that is the year that the debt takeout is expected. And so for the Performing Arts Center, the current model shows, um, we don't really think that's realistic since we don't have a feasibility study back yet. So we're recommending that we change that year to twenty twenty-three. The Civil War Museum is no longer on the list of priorities, and so we're recommending a removal of that.
It's not been taken off. Did, but the board used, you've, um, you're asking the board. It, the, the Civil War Museum has not been removed as a priority by the board. The board has not changed their vote. We're asking them today about that priority. And the reason is, I believe that the city has not, has removed their commitment of the seven and a half million dollars. And that was a part of the resolution that was passed by this board that we would put in seven million dollars, and that we received a state grant of thirty million, as I recall. Okay, thank you.
And so if your action is to put on their, those.
It's just a, I mean, it's in the agenda. It came as an agenda item, and it's.
She has it as a.
And she has the current one, and then she has what they're proposing.
Yes.
So we haven't removed it. It's just a proposal to remove it.
Correct.
Why would you propose to move something that was not by resolution by the board? I just, it doesn't seem right.
Because the, the parameters of the resolution now have fallen apart. Because the city no longer has their seven and a half million in the project. And the, the resolution, as it's written by the county attorney, said, we'll keep our seven and a half million in if the city keeps theirs in, and if there's a state commitment.
And, Miss Chair, I just made a point, though. But that's not, I wouldn't think that's staff's position to make a recommendation when there's a resolution in place. What I believe should happen is another resolution should come from the commissioners to ask if they should take that off.
And that's what we're here for today. I, I think we probably should not have said proposed. We're just asking you to consider. I apologize for, we shouldn't have said proposed. That's my fault. We're here today to talk about the priorities and reconfirm them.
Well, but you got to look at the proposal because they changed the dates too on some stuff. So, I mean, it came across.
It's a rec, there's no doubt.
I mean, and so I, you know, some of the things that they proposed that, you know, I, I thought were really good, because, I mean, a couple of things just weren't going to happen. I think they only changed like a couple of things.
Well, and so, um.
Performing Arts and the County General Services.
Yeah, so the dates on those, as far as the debt issuance, the year of the debt issuance, moving that out from twenty-two to twenty-three. And the other, I, I think I just need clarity. Um, I have read in the, the February sixteen minutes that the item was Grace Creek and Cedar Creek Water, but the discussion has been more about Grace Creek. And so I need clarification about whether we are calling this capital item Grace Creek and Cedar Creek Water or just Grace Creek. And that, and so those were, those four, those four, um, items are what we're asking you to. to consider.
Yes. So, what, I think you had it right, because you had 2025, the Grace Creek Water. I think that you would want to take that Cedar Creek and put it under that 2033, which was water expansion as a whole, because that's what we were talking about. I think if you do that, that makes.
Because we don't have a P R or anything for Cedar Creek.
And the money that in that line item won't do both of them. So, it's no reason to put both of them in that line item for that amount.
Okay.
So I think if you move it down to that water expansion under that 2033.
Okay.
That makes it, I mean, it's just easy to do it that way.
Okay.
There are no questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, you know, I've always talked about building a school for East Smith. I wanted to see that in the C I P. And I've talked to the manager, and I guess if the school system makes a formal request, it doesn't go in there, but I think that that's, talking to the general out at Fort Bragg, I mean, they really wanting to move that, and we've had some discussion. The superintendent and Mr. Chairman was at the meeting last week and asked me to sit in. And hopefully they'll come back. There were three options on the table, and if they can do that, make a decision, maybe we can put that into the C I P budget to be able to move forward on that. I think especially as we're looking at this American Rescue, American Jobs, and all, some of this other stuff, and with the military, there's no better time than to put that as one of the priorities.
Yes, sir. Thank you for preparing us.
So we stick it in that somewhere.
There's an action to be taken on this. Is there a motion?
I have a question, please.
Yes, sir.
As an ex educator of my life, I've been, this book, nowhere in here did it say, did it say some of our priorities was public education. I had my little sticky pad, I had my little sticky pad ready to stick up on the board that day. Am I missing something?
No, sir. We just tried to say, I'm gonna comment on what you get ready to say.
And so now, and Glenn, I appreciate it, at least it's gonna be somewhere that we're gonna get a school or we're gonna do something for our educators, but I just wish that if it was, if it's that important today, why wasn't it that important, you know, a month or two ago? But I'm satisfied that at least we're having a discussion about our education system and mentioning the superintendent and the school board, yes.
What, that was my initial conversation, and the manager and I were having when Ms. Shipp went up there, was that, that was a priority. If you remember, when we were there, they said, we're not gonna talk about the priorities you already set, we just wanna look at these new ones. So, that should have been included. That's what I was talking about. There was an education piece, and then we had talked about the East Smith and all of that, and I think the school system has set some priorities and stuff. So, it was in those other priorities, and so, but that day, we said we were just gonna focus on, and that's all they brought forward, but saying that those old priorities were still on the table. And that's why I started from the beginning, so I think, but thank you. But I think that's one, the East Smith, that we need to kind of put as a priority and move forward for this whole community.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And I was on Goldie's on Monday, Tuesday, Monday, yeah. And the question was presented to me by your son-in-law, that he had presented to Goldie about why it was not, why the school budget was not a priority, funding was not a priority. And my response to him at that time was that it's always a priority, because in a year we deal with the school budget, and we know we have to, but we have to make sure that our schools are operating in top shape as far as the teachers are concerned, bus drivers, everyone there. And so we will always, that's always been a priority for the board of the mission, and to think that it's not. And I'm gonna say that. Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what we said, but I want you to know, as a commissioner, for you too is a priority, I would think, especially.
True, so it means for me too.
Yeah.
I've lived my whole life as a commissioner.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying, sir.
That was meaning.
I was just saying, thank you so much. I was just including you. Including you, sir. Wasn't trying to, no, no, nothing, but anyway, yes, Madam Manager.
But I can see how you'd take it that way.
But it wasn't that way.
It wasn't meant that way.
It wasn't.
It wasn't meant that way.
He don't like me.
Yeah, the two of y'all, it's all love, it's love all around the table. Lot of love around the table.
So, I think just to recap, we're looking for some guidance. In here is consideration of changing the Performing Arts Center debt takeout from fiscal year ending 2022 to 2023. Your consideration of whether the Civil War Museum project stays within the model, changing the County General Services Building project debt takeout, moving it to 2023, and updating, well, keeping the Grace Creek Water project in 2025 only as Grace Creek, Cedar Creek would be a part of that major water expansion in 2033. That's the feedback, that's the ask today, is your consideration on those items.
Yes, Commissioner Adams.
I guess my only question, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir.
Is, okay, we got the feasibility study of the county facilities.
Yes, sir.
What does that mean, I guess? Because to me, if we talk about the County General Services Building or courthouse renovation, at some point, the feasibility study has to be done. So, is that in that 2021, what's in that 2021 feasibility study county facility? I saw the big book. They did do some good work. I'm gonna tell you, staff has done excellent work on all of our buildings of their life and usage and all of that stuff, because they had me in there for a long time.
Yes, sir. So, the feasibility study that's in there for 2021, that since Jermaine is here now. Yeah, so we're starting that feasibility study. It includes the inventory that's part of one of your priorities, but it also looks at the option of combining county services into a general services building. It would look at location, it would look at options, who should be co-located, that type of thing, in order to better serve the citizens. And then it would also look at how would we retrofit this building for the state offices and court facilities.
So, at this point, you would like for us to entertain a motion or?
Or either, well, may, well, the May agenda session will be a little bit late, but we could, and we're just asking for your thoughts. I mean, it can remain the same, or?
Yes.
And I guess I go with Mr. Keating. I don't believe, if you look at it in our resolution, our resolution is probably dead on the Civil War Museum in terms of the things that they had to do. So, you know, we can do another resolution removing it, but it needs to be removed. I think we need to move forward the ones that we have. If it comes back to life, it comes back to life, in terms of that, and I don't think we do what we have, the city, I don't, I think the city does sometimes. But I don't think it, we need to put that money out there when we got these other pressing needs, and I can take that and put it over here on my, on my building across the street. See, that ought to be, I'm finna walk straight and take that out and put in my, what'd you say, remove, put in there, the renovations of, I think that needs to be in here, I mean, if we're gonna talk about.
We haven't approved it as a project, but that certainly.
Yeah, and so I think that can go in there, that we can move this thing on, so I'm in agreement with the proposed that came across. I think you saw it. But I do think I want to, at least talking about that, the school building, just a little comment.
Yes, Commissioner G.
My iPad died, so I didn't have this information. So, no, it's not, it's my fault. Maybe I had poor planning on my part, but I know Commissioner Moose is not here also, and so I'm gonna vote against it, just so we can come up on the next vote, next, as an item of business, in case there's any questions. But I would like to look at it a little bit more thoroughly, and then, because there's questions to be answered.
It ain't a whole lot on the, honestly, it's one page. It's one page. So I would move that we do the proposed, updated proposal of the capital planning model, move that to our next meeting on April 19th.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner, thank you. On paper.
Mr. Lightness.
Yes.
Commissioner. Can I start over here?
Were you with that again?
She was a yes.
Okay.
Chairman Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Thank you. And you vote out.
Yes, sir. Item four I is a lease agreement for the Wright Track group home, and I'm gonna ask Deputy Manager, Mr. Holder, to present this item.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and to all of the board. This next item for consideration to be forwarded to your April 19th regular board meeting is a lease agreement between Cumberland County and Alliance Health for the Wright Track Group Home, and that group home is located at 162 Sally Hill Circle in the City of Fayette. As you may recall, during your December 10th agenda session, Mr. Rob Robinson, Alliance Health CEO, gave activities, among which included work that they have engaged in with D S S, Cumberland County D S S, and the state that will facilitate residential treatment placement for youth in D S S custody, and on youth that are in court involved. At that time, Mr. Robinson mentioned that Alliance was exploring residential treatment options with a provider of these services in the Charlotte area, if you'll recall. This board did approve utilization of reserved Cumberland County fund balance that is on the Alliance Health accounting records to work to develop these services as well as other services here in Cumberland County. Since that meeting, Alliance has worked with county management, D S S, and county legal to arrange for these services to be provided right here in Cumberland County. The currently idled and vacant Wright Track Group Home would be utilized for the provision of level three group home treatment services. This lease will be a $1 per year annual lease for up to five years with Alliance. During that time, Alliance would sublease the home for no cost to Thompson Child and Family Focus, which is a leading provider of clinical and prevention services for children and families across the Carolinas. Thompson is a nationally accredited nonprofit agency. There are several renovations and improvements that will need to occur in order to prepare this facility for state licensure, and the county will work collaboratively with Alliance to accomplish that work. With that, Mr. Chairman, we would seek your approval for this lease to be placed on the April 19th Board of Commissioners' agenda as a consent item.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, let me make sure, because I know that people are listening, and you may think that the $1 that we leasing this thing for, $1, and how does that make good stewards of us? I know that I've got Mr. Holder here, but I've also got my D S S director, Brendan Jackson, and they would probably tell you the amount of money we spend to send these kids out of county and out of state, far outweigh what we're gonna do with this $1. If it was that, I wouldn't be supporting this, but I would tell you this, is that as we were at the Alliance Health Board meeting last week, and I think staff, staff did an excellent job. Thank you all for getting this done. All the counties that were in Alliance's committee, I mean, in their provision, were envious of the fact that Cumberland County is getting this, and they were going forward trying to figure out how to get one too, so. I know Mr. Keith doesn't like that $1 thing, but I think this was, yeah, but this one, this one saves us far much more than, and utilizing that building, and that's the utilization of it on the backside. Is that missing?
The only thing I would add is something that you really can't quantify, and I know.
Keeping kids close to home, too.
Right, I was gonna, yes, sir. One of the goals is to try to reunify children with their families, and so being closer to home helps with that.
Well, plus staff, having to drive their kids. I've always had an issue, and I won't put it out loud, but, you know, we put these kids in cars with our people, who, if you gotta stop in the bathroom, you hope they don't run away. So, then I would move to approve the lease agreement with Alliance Health for utilization of the Wright Track Group Home located at 162 Sally Hill Circle, Fayetteville, in the provision of a level three child residential treatment service.
Was that, was that to be moved to the?
To the 19th.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we need a motion moved to the.
Yeah, I'm in.
Okay.
I almost forgot, yeah, move it to the April 19th. Thank you for.
And we have a second for Commissioner Council. On paper.
Your vote, Commissioner Lightness.
Yes.
Commissioner Council.
Yes.
Your name and age.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Thank you.
You remember I tried to get the other people one, you know? We didn't go to the building, but we got one.
Madam Adams.
They got one, that one's still there. That one's still there. They built a double, too.
Madam Manager, please.
Item four J is a request of the town of London to relinquish its jurisdiction to the county for the minimum housing code ordinance. Mr. Moorefield.
This is the same thing that you did for the town way back in January. And the resolution is, the appropriate resolution is in the package, request the town, the town part took action back, I think in December, with the resident court resolution seeking its jurisdiction to the county and asking the county to apply its minimum housing ordinance enforcement.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams.
I don't have a problem with this, and London doing this, but I don't believe there's any enforcement going on. I wrote to, well, Mr. Taylor, she was the other day, wrote to Shaw Heights. We not enforcing anything in our own jurisdiction. I mean, that's, I mean, we just need to have a frank discussion, are we just doing these things just to do these things, or actually doing, do something for these folks? Because I mean, we're not doing it for the county.
It's a blank. It is.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, Rick, how many towns are you doing this around?
Two, this would be the second one with this new approach. We have an interloper agreement with Eastover.
And Falcon.
And Falcon and Stenmore.
Why don't we just control this instead of waiting for all of them to come to us? I mean, are we doing, who is doing the code enforcement and?
Wait. Now, now.
Okay. Falcon.
Falcon has, Falcon has an interloper agreement. So that's. Yes.
So, everybody except Spring Lake, Your Hope Mills, and the City of Fayetteville?
Yeah, it's Spring Lake, Godwin doesn't have a thing.
Okay.
Spring Lake, Hope Mills, Godwin, not.
Why do we have six different contracts? Why can't we just have one?
Well, this is the way of the contract. What this is now is they're ceding their jurisdiction to the county, and we're applying, it's no longer a county function, the responsibility becomes totally the county's. Kind of do that to our own decision.
Okay, sir. By the by nature, that would require us to have more inspectors, right?
Well.
If you got more area.
Maybe, but right now it has not.
Okay, thank you.
You can't hold that.
Madam, there action to be taken on this?
This would be the same, if you want to accept this to move forward to the April 19th agenda. This will be a consent item, because there will have to be a public hearing to.
Okay, Commissioner Council.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
On paper.
Your vote, Commissioner Lightness.
Yes.
Commissioner Council.
Yes.
Commissioner Keating. Chairman Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
You name it.
Thank you so much.
I don't classify this as not getting approval as much as it is the state being, appearing to be very cautious and developing this process as we go. We have jumped through all the hoops that they have provided us along the way, and once that's complete, we seem to have a new set of hoops to jump through. We, I do see an end in sight, but I'm just hesitant to put a date on it right there.
And we had a message from the county manager about rolling out services again in May.
Yes.
Workforce development, we're going to that same schedule. Matter of fact, by March, will most county departments be open back up to the public in the first part of May, or are there some that will not?
All will be open, but the library will have a phased reopening beginning May 3rd, but all the doors will be open.
Aside from the library, every county department will be accepting citizens in their doors.
Yes, sir.
First week of May.
Yes, sir. No, Monday, May 3rd, and the city's reopening their buildings the same day.
Okay.
Where's the needs at, are we able?
Yes.
Tracy, isn't that called by the state about?
So every workforce area is a little different, but it is usually caged by what DWS does, because they do have a significant portion of the different programs over there. But there are a handful of counties that operate these workforce areas, and if the county was a state or a May 3rd, for example, then the expectation would be that the career center opens May 3rd.
Okay.
That would be the plan. Yes.
Okay, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. So now we'll move to item five. It's been almost six or seven months since we hired a grants manager. We thought that it would be timely for Yvonne Mendez, who supervises Sula Bandesola, to give us an update on the grants management activities.
Welcome.
We'll try to do a better job of that. Getting information out in the agenda packet. Sometimes it's just the timeframe.
Isn't that necessary, that you all got something just developed?
Well, that's, this is our job. We'll do a better job of getting things out in the packet.
Well, you just had two agendas to do at once.
It's all right, it's our job.
You don't want me to say, but I don't want to say. You don't want me to say, but I don't want to say.
Well, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here and be able to hear you on all that about emergency management. Um, just to give you a little bit of background, as you may recall, this position was rejected by the Board of County Commissioners back to fiscal year 2020. County Management and County Funds Works together, and developed a description for the position, and it actually was finally completed in the spring of 2020. Some of the highlights for the positions are going to be, but basically grant writing, maintaining a county-wide inventory, doing background analysis, and with others. Once the job position was created, we worked together to the reinforcement process, and back in August 2020, Sula Bandesola was hired as the county grants manager. Sula's experience came from work of at least more than 30 years with county operations. While we have accomplished so far, well, basically in the past month, Sula has been working in getting oriented about Cumberland County, understanding our needs, understanding what our Board of Commissioners priorities and goals. Sula has been working in meetings with departments, she has been having one-on-one meetings that help her to understand what our department needs, the ongoing application, um, understanding what are the funding requirements. While, because she needs a good starting point to what we did grant, this is a new, like I mentioned before, you got, you can be sure she was at that position, and because it was a new grant position for the county, we were looking and saying, how we gonna start working, how we put this together, and we work this and make this happen. So basically, that's a little bit of what has been accomplished so far, also to this process. Sula has been working with some of the most recently enlarged award grants for the county. Just to mention some of them, the CARES app funding, they have a funds, have, I'd say, American Rescue Act through the Board of Elections. In that too, actually, she has a very active role. She was working with departments and even here in the counties, with the monitoring, the monthly reporting, and even in the case of they have a funds, doing the drawing downs of the funds. For the non-cumberland children, we have been working with American Rescue Plan on a monthly basis, we have to report to the state, and to do that, we get reimbursement for the homelessness that we are working. This is part of the CARES app funding too, with the justice system. She has been working to, as a liaison between the county and the association. Right now, we are working and trying to get like a strategic plan that's gonna design, it's gonna help us to know what we're gonna be looking for, what grants we need to stick for. In terms of emergency rental assistance, she was working, she has been working with community development, and started working, seats application all the way through the process line out, like the evaluation of the RFP that was out there. And for the American Rescue Plan, as Katie mentioned before, there's gonna be a group of county members working on that, so of course, Alliance is a member of that committee, helping us through the implementation, tracking, reporting, and how basically we're gonna go out and reach out and be sure that we maximize the points that the county can receive. What challenges are we facing, how we plan to deal with them, what is the action of that? Basically, have we changed what is our culture mindset? Basically, we need to develop advanced management infrastructure for the county. What that means, we need to create a grants potion environment for the county. How we gonna do that? We are actually working on that right now. First of all, we are working with our current policy, and we are developing procedures that are gonna help us to streamline the whole application process. Right now, basically, each department do a little bit of their own, but they understand it's better for them to the system, we're gonna be able to actually define a process, so all the departments are gonna be able to follow the same process. What else we are doing? We are training ourselves. We feel like if we are able to create an environment and a potion for that, we need to train our employees, we need to give them the tools so they can learn. That's what we are doing. We can schedule trainings, we already scheduled trainings for departments, for staff, they're gonna be able to go there at what, in grant writing, that should result in doing better grant application, and a day for the county, maximize the points that the county could get awarded. We also gonna be working, we are working to, we have a system, and we have a stop line, what else we need? We need to have a system, a system that can help us to have a central policy system that's helpful. It's just one place that everybody's gonna be working together. Departments are gonna be able to have access to that system. What else that system is gonna provide us? It's gonna provide us tools for research. We're gonna be able to do research on federal, state, and even foundations opportunities that are out there. We're gonna also be able to work to, with previously awarded grants, we're gonna be able to look for that, see when the grant was awarded, see the actual applications that were submitted through that award, that are gonna help us to understand too, okay, what happened. If we applied for a grant and we were not able to obtain the award, we're gonna be able to see maybe why we did, what we missed to the grant applications that are tools that are gonna help us to do this better and improve. Also to do this one, and I would say that's part of one of, if we have staff coming here, they're gonna be able to do grant writing, then we're gonna be able to then maximize the points to the county. And now that we know the county has worked and has been awarded an RFP and a contract to the lawyers, we're gonna be able to work together with them. Right now, what we are working, we are working with management in finding out like a strategy on how we're gonna do this process, how we're gonna maximize that relationship that we have with the lawyers, and how they're gonna help us, how we frame that strategic plan to their grant, so they can help us to maximize the points for the county. I just want to kind of mention before I'm done yet, before I'm open to your questions, that staff actually is working really hard on this, we are very excited on this, this is completely for the county, but we don't, we are assured, we can assure you, and we know, by having us to provide the county opportunity to have resources that the county has been struggling before, that we're gonna be able to reach out and go, maybe to even other grant makers, other people out there that we never did before. So if you have any question for me?
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any questions or comments?
I guess I misunderstood what we were doing. I really did. We had departments doing grants before, the health department used to do them all the time, DSS used to do them all the time, library used to do them all the time. I thought the grant writer was coming here to write grants and finance all those, once the grants got here, you gotta have somebody who can facilitate that. I looked at all the money on the sheet, all that money was given to us, American Rescue, the CARES money, I didn't see any grants on there, maybe the justice system. What that grant writer was supposed to be doing, because it seems as though we using them to, once the grant gets here, to help facilitate that, and I guess you gotta do that a little bit because they knew what was in the grant, but that takes away from writing the grants, and I thought that's what the grant writer, I, it looks as though we put a lot on the grant writer besides just writing grants, and then we going back to doing the departments, which is what we were, I thought, and I just kind of misunderstood what was happening, and I thought we were getting away from that, the centralizing of that grant pressure to be able to write those.
So maybe I misunderstood. So what was the vision that the departments no longer wrote grants, and that there was only one person in the county to write grants?
I don't know what the vision was, I think departments were still writing, but I mean, I thought the grant writer was going after some of those big grants that we were talking about, that the departments didn't have. I mean, if we looked at, the health department got a bunch of grants, they were little small grants, and they were within the nutrition or whatever.
Yes, sir.
But there were larger grants out there that we were looking and seeking to get. Now, it's just, that might not be the vision this board, but that was just in my mind, so I maybe, I'm just, maybe I'm.
I think that's.
I'm not, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I mean, that's, that's still our vision. Now, I think, remember, Sula's only been here since August, and there really haven't been any grant opportunities out there up until recently because of COVID. Most of, most of the grants have been COVID related and have just been.
Well, with the government, but there's a whole lot of other NELTS grants and all of these places that give grants besides just government grants and go into Congress and looking for.
Yes, sir.
People have been getting grants, I mean, these companies have been awarding grants all over, I mean, so it's not, if you're just talking about the government, yeah, that has, that has been just casually, but there are so many other places to do grants and everything with.
So I, I think the process is, and what they've laid out is, Sula's trying to establish a relationship with everyone in the department that is responsible for grants and do some grants writing training. And I think the next step would be, is to identify from the departments to Sula in that work group, what are the, the programs that they want to seek grants for, and Sula will work with them, because yes, a part of her job is identifying those grant opportunities and assisting with writing the grants.
Mr. Chairman. I can play, I can play witness to all grant writer proposals also. I, I didn't realize, if, if we have to do all of this now, it's no wonder why we didn't get that many grants before, because we didn't have any structure in place. I mean, we have to do, so it sounds like we're looking for Sula to be an educator more than a grant writer. I assume, will she be the one that's conducting this training and, and looking out for, I think grants just seem to be like kind of a, you don't know what you don't know type of thing, and you gotta go out and look for them. So do I read this right, that we're trying to set up a complete educational grant writing system for other departments to come to a class and become a beginner or an intermediate grant writer? And then how are we gonna measure success of the programs?
So sir, the best practice is for the higher credit writer, which is a major step that most organizations do not have, identifying with Sula's concept. She's another new trainer, who's hired an outside friend. The best way to do this is for us to have people in the departments that are search matter experts that she can then work with to help submit grants. I've seen this going before, that's the most successful way to handle it. To, to think, you know, to think that Sula could write grants for 20 some odd departments, I don't think was, you know, is, is a good thought, because that's, that is just too much money. And when we're talking about what's gonna be coming down the pipe from the federal government, we need to have all hands on that. That is the idea behind training additional folks to be able to write these grants, and Sula will help them, and, you know, and then we're talking about also, all these different priorities, we're gonna have a whole lot of money coming down with the federal government, we need to have everybody we possibly can be able to write these grants.
But we're not gonna have, we're not gonna have all this money coming down when we put this program together. I, I understand, but it's okay.
Thanks, I'm gonna say something.
Okay. Madam Manager, thank you all so much.
Thank you. The, the next item are the monthly reports, they've been provided in your packet, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions about any of the monthly reports that's been provided in your packet? If not?
I will, sure. I mean. So it sounds like we're looking for Sula to be an educator more than a grant writer. I assume she'd be the one that's conducting this training and, and looking out for, I think grants just seem to be like kind of a, you don't know what you don't know type of thing, and you got to go out and look for them. So do I read this right, that we're trying to set up with a complete educational grant writing system for other departments to come to a class and become a beginner or an intermediate grant writer? And then how are we going to measure success of the programs?
So, sir, the best practice is for, you hire a grant writer, which is a major step that most organizations do not have, identifying with Sula's concept. She's another new trainer, who's hired an outside friend. The best way to do this is for us to have people in the departments that are search matter experts that she can then work with to help submit grants. I've seen this going before, that's the most successful way to handle it. To think, you know, to think that Sula could write grants for 20-some odd departments, I don't think was, you know, is, is a good thought, because that's, that is just too much money. And when we're talking about what's going to be coming down the pipe from the federal government, we need to have all hands on that. That is the idea behind training additional folks to be able to write these grants, and Sula will help them, and, you know, and then we're talking about also, all these different priorities, we're going to have a whole lot of money coming down from the federal government, we need to have everybody we possibly can be able to write these grants.
But we're not going to have, we're not going to have all this money coming down when we put this program together. I understand, but it is okay.
Great surprise to you.
Okay. Okay. Madam Manager, thank you all so much.
Thank you. The next item are the monthly reports. They've been provided in your packet, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions about any of the monthly reports? That's been provided in your packet. If not...
I'm a little bit sure, I mean...
There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor?